Okay, we're ready to start our study session this evening. Thanks all for coming and being in person and wearing your masks and social distancing. Appreciate it. It's nice to see faces rather than on a screen. It's kind of nice, even though I can only see half of them. Just want to let you know that there'll need to be a 10 or 15 minute break in between the meetings, so we'll probably have a hard stop of this work session at about 10 to 7:00. And it is being recorded. I'm not sure if it's being livestreamed right now, but it is being recorded. So, I need you all to speak clearly and a little bit louder maybe than you're used to, so that everyone can hear in the room and through the mask. With that, I'll turn to the purpose and agenda with Dr. Stahl.
Great, good evening. Good evening, everyone. The purpose for our study sessions is to share information to ensure that we have contact in our work, so that effective and efficient decision making can be done at the board level. So this evening, we're going to do an update on where we are with some of the budget process and some of the long-range revenue considerations that we talked about during the budget process. And then, aside from that, we're also going to move forward with some additional conversations and some of the policy work that board members have been taking a look at regarding under policy.
Okay, then moving on to district governance and policy. With our three-year board agenda, we will be reviewing that again at the meeting, and we did review it at the board retreat, and we'll be able to approve that on our agenda at the regular later this evening. So we'll move forward to the oversight of operations and the budget update.
So we'll start with the budget update and overview of the enrollment. So we've been working after the last budget was approved. Sorry, I'm really struggling. I have a medical condition. I can't really speak very well through this mask, so we are... I'm sorry, I have to step out.
We'll get... I think Maureen went to get Julie. I'll go ahead and start with what the overview will be as Julie comes back in. We'll take a look at where we are with our budget reality, recap some of the reductions in that process. She'll have an update for us on enrollment. Is she okay?
I will check on her.
We'll have an update on enrollment, and then...
Oh, perfect. That was way better.
Now we're all envious.
Julie, thank you for testing those for us. That's fantastic.
This is way better for me. Thank you. I'm sorry, I didn't catch that one.
You know what, Julie? I was just... I was recapping, and I'm... Let me finish this slide, then I'll hand it to you. Additionally, after the enrollment update, we'll take a look, as I said, at some of the long-term strategies for additional revenue. As you recall, during our stakeholder input process, we heard different ideas that our staff had about how to get additional revenue. So really, the focus for this evening is we want to give you an update on our revenue strategy. We have a conversation that was one of the long-term revenue strategies, was to take a look at a technology level. We just want to talk to you, get input from you about what you would need to further our conversation. And then, the full planning due to COVID uncertainties that certainly is having an area of concern as well. And then, we'd like to get to some conversation about planning parameters to help us as we move forward. And now I'm happy you're back, Julie.
So we've been working on our budget, kind of talking about it, guiding principles, and making sure that we're meeting our educational needs of our students, and while being fiscally responsible for district, student, staff, and community. You know, these are all the guiding principles that are out on our website and part of our mission. Student achievement, fiscal integrity, and a strategic plan. We want to make sure that we're successful learning and safety for all of our students, transparency in our discussion. We would like to have a balanced budget in 2021, maximize our financial resources, maintain our fund balance per board policy between 8% and 12%, align resources of time, talent, and funds to achieve strategic priorities, and continue to analyze future healthcare, insurance costs, and other contractual obligations that the district may have. So those are kind of our guiding principles as we work through our budget process, and this is really for the 21, 2021 school year. No? Yep, 21, 22, actually. Talking about 21, 22 here. We have an approved preliminary approved budget for the current year, and we're really looking for a balanced budget for 21, 22. So as we finished the last budget in June, and we had some reductions and some increases in revenues in certain areas, some of the things that we also talked about were additional revenue themes for long-term strategies to help the district out over the long term. And so, it's to maximize our levy authority, some additional operating levies, a technology levy, it's also called an operating levy in technical terms, and then we are looking at additional achievement and integration levy authority. And we're talking about different things like increasing parking fees, activity fees, and other types of things for potential additional revenue, but really those long-term strategies that will help the district out over the long term. We brought back these slides from our budget presentation just to remind everyone that we have several funds that have different requirements for those funds. And our general fund is separate from like our child nutrition services fund. It's separate from our community ed, our building construction. Debt service fund is where we pay back the financing for that building construction fund, and then our internal service where that's our health and dental insurance, our OPEB, those kinds of things. But our general fund really is about the majority of our budget. You know, of a $150 million budget, it's about, it's over $100 million. So it is the majority of our budget of what the district spends. And just as a review of the basic formula, hasn't kept up with inflation. We've talked about that for several months now, and that's just another review slide. And then, the next slide also is just the actual per pupil, how we spend our money, and how much revenue we get, and how much expenditures that we have compared ourselves to other districts. We've talked a lot about that we have, we spend less than other districts, we receive less revenue than districts in our area. Talked a little bit. It's just an overview. You've seen that several times. But our enrollment, this really hasn't changed much from June. It really typically doesn't change much since June. We're about 51 students over our projected budget right now. I think in June it was 50, so one student difference. We are seeing some movement right now. We have families inquiring quite a bit about homeschooling, families inquiring quite a bit about the different options that are available to schools right now. And so, there is a lot of talk, as you know, in the community about, and in the state and the world, about what's going to happen when school starts in the fall. And so, parents are planning for that, and they are looking at those options and what's best for their family. And so, I expect that this number will change quite a bit by the time we start school in the fall, just depending on what the governor recommends for schools. And so, as we prepared and we talked about, just a little bit about those long-term strategies, one of the things that we're going to do tonight is have Marcus talk to the board just about his budget and what's included in that part of that budget, and so that you understand when we talk about the need for additional revenue for technology. We talked about the general fund. All the money for our technology comes out of the general fund. It either is coming out of just the regular general fund piece of it, or there is a little bit that does come out of our capital dollars for technology, but not a lot. Majority is simply just out of our unassigned general fund portion. And so, when Marcus talks about it, this is an opportunity for you to ask questions and for you to understand what we use our technology funds for. So I'll let Marcus explain all of that.
Thank you, Julie, and thank you, Dr. Stahl. Members of the school board, good evening. Marcus Malozom, the Director of Technology for Lake City Schools. Thanks for having me. Back budgets, I'd like to talk a little bit about the spring and what happened on March 15th, when the governor said the districts have two weeks to implement a distance learning plan, and how we responded to that, and I'll speak briefly to that. And we'll talk about some numbers, and some projections, and some possibilities as it comes to a potential tech levy. But the purpose of tonight is just to show you what we see on a daily basis, talk about devices, talk about budgets, and potential things that we could maybe offer a levy. But I want to start the conversation. Ask your questions. Stop me when you need to. Please, just ask questions as I go along, and I'll do my best to answer. If I don't have the answer, I'll work really hard to get it to you the next day, okay? All right. Our new strategic plan. And in the old one, 21st century skills were called out. And as part of the process, the review process with all of our stakeholders, at the time we're like, it's 2018 or when we did this, 2019, it's like, we're deep in the 21st century. So we could stop calling it out 21st century skills. So let's just go with, hey, everything we do is impacted or affected by technology in some way or another. So it's embedded throughout the plan without being called out for 21st century skill sets. But what we did is we highlighted a couple of areas where we thought it's a really solid fit, and obviously under the vision that technology enhances instruction, communication, and administration, what we do. Talked about, let's do a comparison on districts around us, that we've used these districts in the past to compare for a variety of reasons. Business office solicited these districts and said, if you have a tech levy, and how much is it, and so we could report that, those findings. And you see that we don't have a tech levy in place, nor does Farmington. The other districts we compare to can be anywhere from $2.3 million to, hard to read, I apologize, 7.3 annual per year. So this is a funding mechanism that other districts that we've used in the past to compare to have at their disposal to leverage technology in a variety of ways. We currently do not have one. Just a quick two-year snapshot of what we spend our general dollars, our those whole one funds on. Software, hardware, salary, consultants, and I can speak to that here in a moment. E-content subscriptions, a lot of the, our curriculum is switching from traditional textbook to e-curriculum that represents that. We do provide district cell phones for a variety of individuals, and assessments, that is WEA, FastBridge, that type of thing. ACT is also included in that. Here's just some, excuse me, here are some examples of when we say, okay, software costs, what does that mean? Well, again, this is, I didn't list every software product or tool that we have here. If you want to get that granular, call me, and I will walk you through every piece of software that we purchase. I'm happy to do that. But that's an example. And there's some of the stuff, some of the things listed here are front of the house, like Adobe Creative Cloud, that's my bundle for our kiddos if they're in graphic design or photography. Alexandria is our library management system. Final Site is our website. Infinite Campus is our student information system. Microsoft, we have an OBS agreement. Navions, e-curriculum. School Messenger is when you hit the autodiler and you hear Dr. Stahl calling you and saying, "We have a cell date," or "We're in session." That's, that's the tool. Email, voicemail, and text is through that. School G is our learning management system. CSO is our elementary portfolio system that we use at K through 5. Heart Learning Software, if you have a smartboard and you want to interact with that smartboard and record it and do things with it, that's that learning suite that we leverage. So a lot of those things are front of the house. There are some things that are listed here back of the house. Veronis is an intruder detection and mitigation software tool that we use. Does a lot of other things, but that's one of the primary uses. Veeam is for backup replication. If you, we get hit with, we don't want to, but if you get hit with CryptoLocker, go back in a point in time and use Veeam. Saves stuff, saves our backups off to a nimble storage solution. All this stuff is behind the scenes that nobody ever wants to see until something goes wrong. They want to make sure it works right. Get where, that's, that's the way that we use, we virtualize our servers. Used to have to buy physical servers, and now you can buy one box or two boxes and virtualize it. So that's some of the stuff behind the scenes. We've listed here who has district-issued cell phones, and that's for connectivity and security measures, so we bet that pretty closely.
Marcus, could I add to that for custodians? The custodians that have district-issued phones are custodians that have area responsibility and are on a call seven days, 24 hours.
From the cellphone reimbursement, these are the actual cell phone.
Correct, correct. That is correct. Yep, accepted. Consulting, we try to minimize consulting. There are times where it's level four, level five, that's beyond our skill or scope or expertise, and we do have to leverage some consultants. But a couple of examples are all street phone phones. Amplified IT is for G Suite for Education. We also, through that membership, are a part of the G Suite for Education Minnesota Consortium. So we, by being a member and using that, we get price breaks on products, and we get to join, go to a collaborative meeting quarterly. Probably virtual this year, but that's okay. We'll use Google Meet. And then Tierney Brothers, they come around each week and clean our projectors, smartboards, they do adjustments. Fieldtechs try to do level one and two repair on that equipment, but if it's something where it's a controller or something where they have to tear the board apart, that's how we leverage Tierney Brothers as a consultant to fix this equipment. This is a technology department staffing comparison by teaching and learning, and we grabbed some of those districts around us, looked at the student enrollment, number of tech staff, and created a quick ratio from that. Included 15 members. I have 13 members, including myself, on the information technology department. Two of them are print shops, so we did not include them in this number, but we did include the forward tech integrationists. That's how we got with 15. So, as you can see there, we have a high staff to student ratio. Now, this is just as an example. These are, I'm not taking these quotes and handing them to Dr. Stahl tomorrow saying, "Here, I'd like a PO." This is for a conversation. It is our equipment, what we currently have, with today's dollars, just for a comparison. If, if we did go out to, for a tech levy, we'd obviously have to get new clothes and adjustments. Or if, you know, sometimes hardware goes down, software goes up, it depends on what you're looking for. But these are just planning scenarios. If we wanted to go Chromebooks, K through 12, a 14-inch Chromebook for all of our, I think the number was based off of 8,709? That number is not accurate. And when we did this, that was the number we used. It'd be a one-time cost of 2.1. Save some dollars by going with a smaller screen. Option two is one-to-one iPads, K-12. Excuse me. Provided two different scenarios there. An OtterBox case, we've used those in the past for the iPad minis that we purchased back in 2015. Those devices are still in our district for a lot of good reasons, but I would attribute that to a, the OtterBox case is rock solid, and it is really, really amazing case, and it has protected that equipment. A lot of you, I'm looking around, have the STM case. Really good case, but it is not the same as the OtterBox case. So that's why you see the price difference there. People ask about the JAMP licensing. We need JAMP. That is our mobile device management solution. That's how we manage the devices, whether they're a MacBook Air or an iPad. They're enrolled, excuse me, enroll them through Apple's DEP program, Device Enrollment Program. That ties it to JAMP. That way, we can manage these devices remotely. If they're lost or stolen, we can lock them. We include self-service in that. Option three, one-to-one iPads, K-8, one-to-one MacBook Airs, 9 through 12. Couple different options, with the OtterBox case or the STM case. Option four is one-to-one iPads, K-5, and one-to-one MacBook Airs, 6 through 12. Or MacBook Airs, you bring into the conversation, the price goes up. Here's our current mobile device inventory. Our iPads, $7,900. And we had to do a lot of changing. When we got the order to go with distance learning, we pulled every iPad that we could find. We found them in carts at the middle school. We found them in the classroom kits, the two-to-ones that we've talked about in the past. We scoured the entire district and found every iPad we could, whether it was an iPad 4, which is extremely out of date, and we'll talk about that here in a minute, to an iPad mini, to an iPad fifth or sixth gen. We found every iPad we could, so we could turn around and change it, so that we now are a 6 through 12 one-to-one district. Middle school kids, 6, 7, and 8th grade, will have an iPad mini. They do right now, and they will moving forward. 9 through 12 will have the fifth or sixth gen. But this is a snapshot of what we have out there right now. Chromebook inventory. Every time we lost space to a wired lab, we lost space to SpaceCrunch, or we needed to add a classroom. We pulled out a lab, we replaced it with a Chromebook card. It's a shift of bringing the kids to the tech versus bringing the tech to the kids. So we have a number of Chromebook cards throughout the district, and that is primarily how we deliver not only instruction and curriculum, whether it's G Suite or other internet searching or research through the internet, and Chromebook's very, very good at that. We do all our testing on Chromebooks as well. A lot of people ask us, "Why do you have both?" We always say, "Well, it's the best tool for the job at the time." But we are constantly looking at that. We are looking for efficiencies across the board, whether it's software. We do internal audits and say, "Do we have a product that does this at a lower rate or less expensive?" We're looking, so our efficiency, they're looking for redundancies, looking to streamline things. I know conversations about the G Suite versus Microsoft. Those are conversations that will continue to happen. Right now, we have Clever, which is a free portal. They have a really interesting pricing structure. They charge the vendors, not the customers. Clever versus Rapid Identity. So we are doing our internal audit and looking for ways to save dollars to help with that general fund. But the reality is, is that our dollars are going, software, hardware, salaries, all that is coming out of the general fund. Like to start the conversation about funding technology out of the general fund? We're going to have to address some things. We have an aging inventory. I mentioned the iPad 4s. They can't upgrade past 10.3.3, and I think 14's coming out, or it's in beta right now. What we try to do is, we try to minimize the devices. If they fall two iOS versions behind, we call it obsolete. We feel that's obsolete. There was a big shift from the iPad 4s, 32-bit versus 64-bit. They can't handle it. The iPad 4s can't do Google Meet. So as we were deploying all these devices to all these elementary families that were opting in this spring, we had deployed over 1,500 devices. We ran out of iPad minis, so we deployed iPad 4s to Lola Delago. They couldn't operate Google Meet, wouldn't run. So we pivoted quickly and deployed Chromebooks to those families as well. So they had an aging iPad and a Chromebook that could have been satisfied potentially with a newer device, but we ran out. That's our current reality. The iPad 4s need to be removed from our inventory this summer, and we recycle them with one of our repair vendors, and they, the price per unit based on what they can pull and harvest out of them. Then they recycle them in a responsible manner. And our iPad minis are aging now too, and I don't believe they're going to be able to handle the new iOS update. So we're at that point again, where we're at this tipping point where iPad 4s come out, hey, we should be okay for a while, but now the iPad minis are going to be obsolete. So, heck, quickly, what questions could I answer? Or what concerns may I address?
So, first of all, I really appreciate the work that we're doing. I know a lot of the students struggle with the iPads. Now, I've got, I've got a few questions here, but the first one that I have is one that hasn't been addressed here, is when you're dealing with something that doesn't have a hard drive like a MacBook Air, or at least a usable one, that are almost dependent upon internet. How are we addressing that discrepancy with the families that are doing their homework?
So I want to make sure I'm tracking your question correctly. Is the MacBook Air with a solid state drive versus a Chromebook or an iPad that are wholly or mostly dependent on internet?
Correct, when they go to, you know, the different...
Yep. It's... It's absolutely a challenge, because if a teacher's using something in the iOS app universe, and they have an iPad that is relatively up to date, and that a couple of versions behind iOS, we're good, because the teachers are using that, whether it's the Mac iOS version or not, they're compatible. But we have better success rates when, when those are in synergy. We're finding that the Chromebooks are really good at G Suite, testing, and internet, because again, to your point, that's, it's based on the cloud, right, or the internet, or access to it. What we found is that we did a needs assessment. We had families in our community that did not have access to broadband or anything. They said, "We need help." So we worked with our T-Mobile rep to find, really, I thought, a creative solution for Mi-Fi hotspots, but they were actually LG phones that they converted into a Mi-Fi. And we deployed over 55 of those to families in need. Directly, they allowed 10 connections, you know, so some of these devices that you referred to that need internet connection in order to be successful, we were able to help those families. But it is a challenge. It's, if we, you can't run Adobe Creative Cloud well on an iPad or a Chromebook. So there are challenges, and it depends on, you know, what, what subject area, and who's teaching it, and what devices the kiddos have. So it is definitely a challenge, and it's one we try to deal with, and try to make sure things are in alignment, device-wise, to what's being delivered as far as the instruction goes. But it's not easy. It's not easy to support multiple devices.
Well, you know, like I said, I, if you, if anyone sat out in front of the Caribou at 13 and 42, they would see at any one time when you work on cars, using the internet from Caribou in their car. But to make it worse is you have high school students trying to write papers on an iPad.
Yeah, no physical keyboard.
Yeah. So, you know, the question that I have then is, you know, and first of all, I love the options. I have a two-part question that's left, and one is, did we consider, due to the sophistication and dependency and the educational requirements, as well as the technology requirements, one absolute necessity, access to the Microsoft suite, since I heard you say Google versus Microsoft? Obviously, if kids go out to get jobs in high school, companies aren't using Google Docs to write documents on, and therefore, they're at a disadvantage if they don't know the words for PowerPoint or something like that. And then the second thing is, is no matter what, when you go with an Apple, they have a stated planned obsolescence, so you're constantly going to run into a situation where you've got things that are just not going to be, they may live forever, but they're not necessarily supported.
By design.
Right, by design.
Yep.
But you do have, like, again, a solid state drive. So did you consider a hybrid of one of these approaches, which is Chromebooks through 5th grade? How's the dependency of the interaction in the educational curriculum? And then MacBook Airs from 6th? 12, and then...
So my response to your question is that we, for this presentation, that's not one of the options, but the purpose of tonight's meeting is to get feedback from board members and other stakeholders, so that we can, when we start having this conversation down the line, we revisit that, we can add that option, say, you know, "We've heard from stakeholders, and this may be a better fit fiscally and for our kids, you know, for the commitment that they're receiving." So we could absolutely generate that with real, you know, real-time dollars and the device, most current device available. So I'm open to suggestions and options on what we should be looking at. If I come back to the, to the board and say, "Okay, I've heard you," I've heard you, and you asked for this option, here it is, and what that cost would be.
Because the Microsoft suite would be available in cloud and Chromebook, but obviously, you could also have it installed with the current OVX, for Microsoft, plus additional licenses for the family, according to how they distribute it, according to, you know...
Yep.
Now, the other question that I have is...
Mary, can I get somebody else, if anyone else? Did you have a question?
Yeah, I did. Actually, a question on the Chromebooks, that option one. I recall from just doing this in the past, you know, I thought you would do remote. So in Chromebooks, is it more manpower now, or...
Yeah, it's, that's an interesting question.
Well, I remember discussing this when we talked about it, and we talked about the fact that there was more needed, more staffing needed, when it wasn't...
Yeah.
That's years ago.
Yep. With Chromebooks, I'm going to answer your question, because I answered it a couple of years ago when we talked about it.
Yeah.
I think Apple does require more management, in my personal opinion. We use Jam, which is a really robust mobile device management solution, but it needs to be in order to manage those devices correctly and securely. Chromebooks, we buy the, you're not buying that?
No, Jam doesn't work on Chromebooks very well at all.
Oh, no. We don't use...
It doesn't?
No, I'm sorry. I saw you shaking your head, so I'm like...
I was like, wait a minute, you gotta separate those two.
No, I'm going to, so...
Remote. I mean, I was talking, you were talking about that, using that as remote access to...
Yeah. So Jam is for Apple products.
Right.
Our MacBook Airs and our iPads.
Right.
Chromebooks come with a Chrome Management. We buy it at a one-time fee, and then it gets uploaded into the Google admin, and they are, in my opinion, more turnkey. It's, you buy it, you set the license to it, off you go, because they do certain things really, really well, and that's connecting to G Suite and going to the internet. So I think they're less management for my team and myself, but that's my opinion.
And then my next question would be staff. What kind of feedback have we gotten from staff on this? I mean, I know they've been doing a lot of training.
We are going to be seeking out staff feedback on this. We brought this to you, we brought this to admin during an admin retreat. Now it's to the school board. We have, we've reached out to Sean. We've had a conversation with him regarding this, but now we broaden this conversation to the rest of the stakeholders, and that obviously includes staff.
Part of the conversation, part of the conversation really has to be here, is to say, what's, what's our need and what's our appetite? You know, you've heard us say many times, we haven't had a sustainable funding stream for our technology, and what was exposed during distance learning was a continued need, not only for now, but also in the future. Our plan was never originally to have six and seven grades, have a one-on-one, to have so many of our elementary students needing devices at home, but that was the reality that we had, you know, also looking at some of the location itself, where costs. And as we were distance learning and looked at some other areas, that we could make sure we were a little principal, because we were being able to do some personal learning, like we buy a cell and some different software. So I think, you know, the big picture of this is, at some point, we're going to need some different inventory, and a lot of that will depend on what, where our budget is. If we're looking at this as a viable option for us at some point moving forward in terms of tech levy, you know you have seen the slide that Julie's shown us a number of times. Not only is our tech levy at zero and much lower, but we have an operating levy that is very low compared to many other districts. But just want to be sure we've got the context of tonight is to make sure you see kind of that additional need and the strategy potentially.
Marcus, before we go on, could you just address the percentage for the iPads as well as the MacBook Airs? Asset Genie, the percentage you actually pay from the overall, or is it included in there already? Hardware fixes, extra cables?
So with the USB-C, a lot of our, I'll start with the MacBook Air.
Marcus, I'm going to ask you to make that question brief, or answer brief, because we need to move on. And I think part of your presentation, if I understand it right, is so that we could decide or discuss the idea of a tech levy rather than the detail of what we'd spend the tech levy money on. That's what I'm understanding you to say. Okay, thank you.
So I'll be extremely brief. MacBook Airs, we do have break, you know, we do break fix, but we do, they do fall, they do get spilled out. You buy adapters for them. The Jam licensing is more expensive. So there's a higher maybe cost to keep them running, acquire and keep them running than some other devices.
So my question is sort of relating to what Lee was mentioning about trying to get a hand, our arms around budget. Those numbers were ranging from two to five ballpark. Those are, if I'm understanding this correctly, that's the downstroke if we were out, if we're purchasing across the board for every student.
Correct.
So from a, from a management perspective, you'd be doing that every, you know, replacing those devices on a periodic basis. I'm thinking about tech levy and how the cash flow would work to something like that. Would this be, what would be the nuts and bolts of, would it be all in one shot? We go in in one year, we're there. Are we buying them in pieces?
Depends on how long...
And rotating them out? Give me some idea.
Yeah, it depends on how long the tech levy's for. See, if it's 10 years, then you'd probably get a two-year rotation. You can get a four- to five-year, wire, four to five years replace and do it again. There's staffing that would be, you know, involved and are included in that. Any, you know, any other tech cost that would be eligible that we could potentially charge to the levy so that it frees up general dollars or O1. But, you know, we have other inventory in the district too that we haven't talked about. Smartboards. We do, we try our best, certainly, leverage E-rate for Wi-Fi and, you know, Wi-Fi access points. Our switches, you know, we use E-rate for our Wi-Fi, which I presented to the board a couple of years ago, and we've done switch upgrades, leveraging and utilizing E-rate. So to answer your question, probably two, two cycles worth of equipment, if it's a 10-year.
We try to levy or lease them, so that you'd have a consistent payment through that time.
And that's what we do now, is that to spread the costs out, we work with leasing companies to, whether it's a four-year lease for the desktops or iPads, or three, desktops were three-year with a fair market value purchase. iPads were four, and the MacBook Airs are a five-year lease. But that's how we were able to do it.
And the other, my other question about this is, you are managing eight or nine thousand students with a staff of 15. We're seeing the other numbers. You could probably go on all night about what additional things you could be doing if you were staffed at a different level. I mean, that's another, that's another issue. What are we, what are we sacrificing, or what are you sacrificing by running as lean as you are required to run?
Try to address every issue that comes in, whether it's a school due to phone call or from a stakeholder, whether it's a student or a parent, within a 24-hour window. There are times where we get slammed, and that, that has to be extended out. But my team works extremely hard to get back to everybody in a timely manner. I just, we, there's a lot of nights and weekends involved to, for the distance learning to be deployed and for day-to-day operations. So you're right, I could go on and on.
Sleep, maybe sleep.
Yeah, you're right.
You know, I think about how lean they are. I just, before we go on, I just, I want to just share some ideas with those of you who are all here long before me that had the vision of saying, we need better infrastructure, we need new devices, and particularly last year, and I know Julie and I, we definitely struggled hard to work on that, how do we get laptops, teachers? I don't know what the last four months have been, if that vision and work has been done. And I think there's some urgency, and maybe that was the right timing to bring this back here, because I don't see that slowing down anytime now. So I just wanted to call that out.
Okay. Terry, was there any discussion, because I know other school districts that had all this rolled out, like Burnsville already had Chromebooks, Wayzata had MacBook Airs at the high school for a lot of them. They actually have a tech class that's part of CompSci, where that's what the kids did during the semester to alleviate the pressure. They could do things like open up the, for print, for home printers, when the kids put in HelpDust requests and stuff like that, which helped the staff, helped the kids, and then some of those kids actually get deployed to do tech support at education conventions and stuff like that. Is that something we've considered, because that may alleviate the resource?
We've got students now who help us on, I don't know how that happened during distance learning. I guess I'm guessing differently than when they're in school.
Our students work into advanced technology, but they're clubs. You know, they have one in middle school, we have one at high school, and they help with rollout knives, and they help with some Level One things, but it's not formalized in a class like your...
Frizzle's got the Geek Squad or something, right?
They actually have a class that does it, and then the kids can get something on their resume to earn money, so yeah.
Yeah, I agree with that.
About staff. I mean, we talk about students to staff ratio, but we also have another 1,200 staff members in the district that they're also supporting.
Questions for me?
Just clarification that if we were able to get the tech levy and we make the turnover use it every two years, but we'd never be starting from clearing everything and replacing everything.
I want to be clear.
Keep rolling over that?
It'd be a two, two replacement cycle. So whether the device is four or five years, we would do that twice.
I see. Okay.
So it would be, we would have two rotations within that.
Okay.
10-year levy. But your second part of the question?
Well, my second part of the question more was that we would continually changing and upgrading as we go through that process. We're not going to just like start over like we did years ago when we had to begin.
No, because we started from the ground up on that one. So it would be...
I mean, I wouldn't want them all to get so obsolete.
Right, right. That's a good one.
End up starting over.
That's why we've worked really hard to use our leases to make sure that it's really fresh, but there's only so many dollars to...
So Marcus and Julie, I think what would be helpful in a, at a future meeting is sort of a ballpark, going to shoot for a number on an annual basis, right? What would that, what would some options be for that amount, and what would the impact of that be for taxpayers and the difference? I, I think most of us are open to this discussion at this time with distance learning and all the stuff going on. So I think it's just continuing to dump.
Everyone's okay with moving forward on this, to have them do more research?
Question, if the schedule, the budget calendar is correct, we would have to do a September board meeting. So that means that by the next meeting, we have options laid out and an actual dollar value with inflation added in, so that we know what we're doing, what the, what the dollar amount would give, so we could actually sell the levy to the community.
On November?
Yeah, isn't that what we're going for here, or no?
That's the, Tom, we're trying to get, we're trying to get, what is the appetite and what?
Well, like I said, if we're going to go out in November, then we need to fairly quickly.
Yep.
So that's what I'm getting at. And I would assume that since this is for Julie's year, that this would come in.
Right.
And we can't afford, with everything that's going on, to wait another year to get it on the ballot.
Anything that you do has to be, I think it's even in August.
August 21st.
You have to decide on it and then vote on it in August to get it certified, right?
Yep.
Otherwise it'd be in following year out.
Can we go out in the spring?
Yeah, you can go out in the spring, and I would have to look at when you would get the money, and that's the piece of it that was, you know, the levy, and so then it's a year out, anything after November.
Have to pay the full special...
But if you went out the following fall, if you went out the following fall, you'd still get it in the same timeframe as the spring.
Oh, the following November?
A lot of year election.
Because it's an off-year.
The presidential election year, all possible to get the most.
Also do out while the, while the whole distance learning...
I think we're going to do it. Volume up. Off work. And maybe, you know, that's more of a question for the admin team. A lot of big to deal with now, in getting referendum sold to a community, especially I think.
A lot of absentee voting encouraged.
Yep.
That's going to change the voting.
That would be my only question about that.
What I can say is, if I'm tracking correctly, and our charge, our takeaways is, go get numbers, run scenarios. We could do all that. So that's my takeaway, is if I'm hearing you loud and clear, is if we want to act, we're going to act quickly. If we need numbers, we need a 10-year forecast. What would cause the impact on, on our stakeholders? More options, more options. I could do that. I could work on that and then bring it back to the board. But again, the reason for tonight is to start the conversation.
We have a lot of other options out there. You know, this is a tech levy. You could go for an operating referendum. You could go, there's other options that are out there for the board, and, you know, so you're talking simply about a technology levy right now, and maybe that's what you want to do. But I think our intent for tonight was to talk about what one option for the board. It wasn't the only option for the board.
If it can be, if it can be done and done responsibly and done thoroughly in as short a period of time as we have, I would support going out this fall if it was conceivable that we could get it all done and do it the right way. I don't want to rush it, but I do think it's possible that the appetite is there, given the circumstance and what's going on and the timing. And I do think in general, our, our community feels better about us asking for things during bigger elections than off-cycles. There doesn't appear, it doesn't look to people like we're trying to pull a fast one if we're doing it at a presidential election, whether we ever are. We never are. We're never trying to do that. But there's a perception issue if we're doing it this fall.
Tech levy would go over better than...
Here's the thing, is it relieves the general. So it helps us in the long run. I think it's, given the distance learning, given the struggles that have gone on, given the fact that we're still uncertain, perfect time to relate to the community on how much we need to have every student have the appropriate technology, wherever they may be.
Here, here.
Yeah. So I, I'd like to strike while the iron is hot and people feel the pain.
Listen.
The four options are vastly different. Broad, broad stretch between...
What we're looking at, and if I can speak to this at all, it isn't just one of these options, because it really is a matter of what do we want our technology department to look like? It may be more staffing. We're looking at a lot of different options for the technology department. As you saw, we have a lot, we, our staff is 100 to 600 students. Plus, we haven't even included the staff that they support, whereas we're a lot less than other districts. So is it looking at additional staffing? Is it looking at additional technology? Is it looking at what can we do for our infrastructure? What is that number that we need to really look at to say, what does that support and that need for technology in this district really look like?
Me first.
Enrique, please.
Been waiting 10 minutes.
We don't know. We can't see you, Enrique, so I didn't know that. Sorry.
Do you want to call it the Google meet? There he is, there he is!
All right. So on the different options, I'm assuming that the price is just the acquisition price. It doesn't necessarily take into account the fully loaded support price. So the device, the, any warranty or extended warranties, support, even acquisition of whatever applications we need for all the different options, whether it's a Chromebook, MacBook Air, or the iPads?
Yeah, it's the cost to acquire the device. Yeah, it's the cost to acquire the device and the management tool, whether it's Google Admin or Jam to manage it remotely, but it doesn't have those other costs associated with it that you just mentioned, and it's correct.
Okay, I think that would be helpful to, information to have when we're evaluating the different options. While the Chromebook might be cheaper, it could be more expensive to support, we don't really know that just based off of these numbers, so having that fully loaded price, kind of referring back to, you only have 15 staff, so we want to make sure that you have the tools and the support that you need to be able to actually deliver on what it is that staff and students and parents are expecting from the devices and connectivity.
Can do, so.
So I think you're.
I just want to say that I think you'd like to be able to get adequate staff and teacher, but I just wonder.
Was Enrique done? I believe so.
Enrique, do you have more?
I do.
Oh, sorry.
There's a bit of a delay.
There's been a delay, it looked like you were done.
Yeah, there's a bit of a delay, so in terms of feedback, I appreciate that you're looking at getting staff feedback. I think there's also value in getting community feedback from parents and from students, so that you can really assess what is the benefit of one device over another in terms of how they actually make it through doing the different assignments, because that experience could be vastly different depending on what the class is, and we don't want to create additional barriers for student success in whatever shape that looks like, whether it's engagement, whether it's actually completing assignments or being able to really achieve good quality results. So just a few different considerations there, and if we're looking at November, kind of segueing over to what Michael was about to say, is this is a lot of work. Is it even feasible to get this done in advance of the November election? And how will be done?
Michael, did you have anything to add to?
That was my question, how will we gather all that input and time along with November?
I'm looking at, I believe, an adoption resolution coming, the election would have to be done by August 21st.
Well, this is on you, Marcus.
So the direction is.
I know that a lot of this information has already been going on for the last couple of years.
So the direction is more about what it would take to get it in place for the November election and what kind of numbers we're talking about, and we're all in agreement that we want, we want them to go forward and research that?
Yeah, I'm not convinced about November, but, I mean, I think research is fine.
I have concerns as well. I would love to see it happen then, but I do have concerns as to how quickly this can get out, how well we can educate our stakeholders, and if it were more of a normal type of environment, it might be a little easier to do, so I do have some concerns with that as well, as you do, I guess. But we'll wait to hear what you have to say if you can get more information.
And do you want, like, ALers to run scenarios and costs and taxing impacts, and based on what number would you like to do that?
Yeah, we'll do tax impact.
Yeah.
But then you have to do it.
Right, but, and we don't, you need to give us that number as to what it would take. Marcus, how comfortable are you getting this together?
We'll do it. You've probably been doing this.
Exactly.
For some time, I mean, in your, you've been thinking. So I think whole ball of wax, get it all, and maybe with a couple of different, for us, for consideration, when you go to ALers, if we've got a number at, we saw the different districts range from 2 to $7 million, I think, you know, if we're, if we're on the, we're at 3, what's the number? If we're at 4, or, I think it should be, the number to me should be driven by what you want to accomplish and what you can do, and then if the number is something we think we can, will work, we go from there. But I think the number, we shouldn't have, we shouldn't give you a number and tell you what to do. I think that's backwards. I think you should tell us what you need, and if the number is something we think can be managed, then we say yes. If we don't like the number, I think then we work back from there.
I agree, I guess I do need to say one thing, I understand that there's a definite need for a technology levy, the technology's out there, it's a great time, strike while the iron's hot, all the things you're saying, but I also have to look at the parent side of it, in that can they afford any more increase in their taxes? I mean, just because they, we need this technology doesn't mean that everybody's got this extra money, because they've had their own economic impacts in the last, what, four months, five months? So I just want to be cautious of that too, as much as they may like to say yes, they maybe can't feel that they can support it. So when we go out, if we go out, that needs to be an education tool as well, and we need to be sensitive to that situation.
And that's why I say option four, add on a million dollars worth of teachers to option one, which would never be the case.
Has something, even if we come up with the ideal option, 100% of that doesn't have to be covered by the tech levy.
Right.
Because right now, we're paying for it out of the general fund. So once we get the options down and we figure out what is, figure out what we are going to continue to pay, because we are continuing to pay a lot of iPads and for the Chromebooks and everything like that, and what we want, what we think the community will tolerate as far as an increase. So I don't think this is an all or nothing, I think we should look at the most viable option and then go backwards from that number that we like. And per what Enrique said, my concern also is whenever you go Apple, those support fees, everything from getting their unique, fact that every single time you do a re, because they do have planned obsolescence, they're going to change, they're going to change their everything on it, just to make sure that you buy additional equipment.
That's the world we live in now.
And so that's a percentage usually of what I would consider in follow-on maintenance and plus in inflationary.
I think you're aware of those things, I'm guessing, so I think you have your direction and we can move on? Is that, did you have more questions? Anybody? Okay, thank you, and I think we're still in the same presentation. Did you have more to say on the budget calendar?
Well, I think we are talking about the budget calendar simply because we were talking about all those things that need to happen for the levy certification, where the, you know, this is no different than we always have a budget calendar every year, this is similar than, same kind of calendar that we've had in the past, it really follows, you know, requirements by law of when we have to do these things, and so they are out there as our board, for the board to look at and review. We would need by August 21st a vote and an agreement that we're going to go out for an election, if I just looked it up in Martha, and I don't know if you've looked it up, is that the right date?
74 days prior, yep, August 21st.
And then by the 18th of September, we would also have to have the ballots ready to go. So it is a very quick turnaround and it would be a very quick decision the board would be making.
And it will probably require an extra meeting.
Yep.
Oh, sorry.
I have had a conversation with Sean and presented this information, but we do. Sean's on this call, if he, I know he's.
I just want to make sure we're giving enough time. I would just like to follow up too, I want to make sure that in this current environment, you know, how do you gather people into the traditional, gather that support and build it? Another thing we'd have to keep in mind is. I'm not, again.
I want to give Marcus some credit here, because this has been an ongoing question about the iPads and Chromebooks and the movement, and even during session, continuous feedback from students and teachers and everything like that, so I don't, I don't think we're starting from scratch here. I do think that we need to go out and make sure that people understand that if they have to move fast, if they want to give some feedback. This is one area that I think is going to hit home as long as we can put in the seat time to make sure that we can be set on it to come to a decision. This is pretty important. Already looking at, as we're going to talk about in a little bit, you know, distance learning again, and away this year, I mean, it's pretty important, and the fact that our kids need some form of laptop. iPad is not preparing them for what we're already in, which is the 20th century. What would that feedback look?
Combination of Google Meet. I'm just trying to think of a couple other opportunities.
Well, and I think part of that is what input decisions need to be now, I mean, I think the exercise of what's that about? Really, it is to relieve the general fund, to sustain budget and to be able to have revenue. So what is that about? And then I think there's probably back to say, what do you think, board, here's the tax implication on this? And do we have to have all of the answers for exactly that plan right away? That would be a great fear of mine, if by August 11th, or, I'm sorry, Julie, what was that day?
August 1st.
If by August 28th, we needed to know that we're going out for a 3.2. There's a lot there. If we could say we need to make X decision while we're getting this, we agreed to it and then we'd be ready to kick off that campaign. A lot more. So I think, I think there is a real question of what's that ask of staff, and then it becomes a conversation of, well, we don't even know if we're going out yet, so that becomes, we kind of went through that with the distance learn, or the fall survey with parents, you know, I think we just have to be really careful about saying, you know, the board is looking at entertaining a potential tech lobby for fall, for the future, if we went out, what are some of those needs? And I think, I think we'd have to do it in that way, and to your point, I think that's why some of that focus group, Google Meet, might be more understandable in a survey.
If we get there and we're ready to go out, to me, we're not going out, we're not going out to the community selling a specific device, we're going out to the community telling people we need technology, because if you go out and we're selling MacBooks, you're going to have somebody vote no because we're not buying a PC. We're going out because we need technology. The specifics, the details, you're going to have an example of what this could be, but the details are going to get worked out after we have that done.
I think they'd like to know it.
Again, I think you give an example of what we, what we can do with this, with this tech levy and why we're doing it, but exactly what, I don't, maybe I'm difference of opinion, but I don't, I think those details we know.
I think the goal is, is that in a broad range, we could say we want to transition board-based devices, for instance, that sort of thing, and then make sure that every kid from kindergarten through 12th grade has a device that they can use and be more productive and also, I mean, there's, because we're going to come up with a hybrid approach no matter what.
Yep.
I mean, you know.
I think, Mary, that's, I think what you just said is a really important, I think as we're, as we're looking at the number, I was just on a call with the mayors and superintendent of the metro, some of those districts that have said we weren't a one-to-one, and that hasn't been our plan, and I think looking at what would that take? So I think some of those huge guiding principles are going to be really important.
Not like we're going to be telling people we're throwing away all the usable iPads, we're going to wait till they cycle out, that would be the prudent choice anyways, and allow the teachers the time to adjust to whatever it is, but I mean, you know, have you ever been in elementary school? Those Chromebooks are gone, like, right away in the morning, I mean, the fifth graders take them right away, and the high school are gone, and the main caps are gone, you know, I mean, it's, it's, other options there too, I mean, they got, you know, actual HPs and Dells and main caps too and stuff like that, those are gone, because they can't work on the devices that they have today, and they are breaking, and this really came to a head during distance learning. It was huge. So, you know, again, I think that, I think with the lessons learned and the feedback already from the distance learning, I don't think this is going to be a hard sell. We just have to determine what the community is going to absorb versus what we're going to continue eat out of the general fund, but anything we can get the community to actually do as far as the tech levy is going to help our overall budget.
So I guess I'm going to ask all of you, since, and maybe, maybe you, Marcus, our next meeting is August 10th, and then the next meeting is the 24th. Is it possible that we, you could have some information for us on August 3rd, and is there any availability problems with anybody to meet on August 3rd?
I'm Oliver.
You're gone, but you could.
Could be virtual.
You could, you could be working on this and we could have some information then.
Yes.
I don't really want to wait till the 10th, when it has to be to the county by the 21st, that seems a little bit close to go to the 17th, so I'm asking for the 3rd possibly? If that's reasonable, that you could have some information for us, because we can talk details all night and we have an agenda ahead of us, I'm trying to move this along here.
We've got other stuff to do.
So you have your direction, and you think you could come up with some kind of information for the 3rd and move on and get some feedback from some people by then?
Yes. I'll get you some caffeine.
Enrique has something to say?
No, I should say, can you make the 3rd?
Oh.
What time? I would, 6:00, we're doing 6:00 for a study session.
I don't know.
Well, it wouldn't be, it could be a study session, but I think it's going to have to be, might have to be, I hope it would be a vote.
Oh, okay.
We could start it, we could start it at 6, and then if we go and decide we can go into a meeting, we would, I guess.
We can present the information as well?
We could probably do it on the 10th.
Yeah, I would do that. I think you need a little time for.
I do too, I just, I'm just thinking, I'm thinking aloud here.
Well, that's how I'm thinking time, so 6 on the 3rd then?
Yep. That works for everybody? I can see when he goes like this, but he's not right now, so I'm not sure what he's doing.
Can you hear us right now?
Can you hear us?
Yeah.
I think he can see us from over here.
We're looking here and he's looking at his.
He muted himself, so now he's out, now he's not.
I was just checking my calendar.
Okay. All right, so August 3rd, 6 o'clock, here.
Can I just throw something else? Sorry that you decided that. What if we wanted to end with that?
That Monday or the whole week before?
Yeah, let the 31st. I was just, I just wondered if that would be.
Does it make any difference for you?
No, it doesn't matter for Julie.
I can't do it. Are you out, out, or can you?
I wouldn't have internet access.
Oh, you wouldn't, okay.
I think one thing.
You know, when we stay with Monday, we haven't.
One of the things that we have to do is do the due diligence for the taxpayer piece of it with ALers, and so that's the piece that's going to take us a little bit of time to do all of that work, and usually they're pretty good about turning it around, they don't know, they have no idea that this is, you know, so they would definitely need to have some time to do their due diligence as well, looking at all of that and seeing what us are.
Julie, what type of industry do you think the number? Act number, I mean, what?
In numbers.
A general. Two, three, four. Yeah, number, or do they need?
I would just give them some scenarios and say, yeah, two and a half million, three and a half million, four and a half million. What would that look like? What would the impact be to the average home? But, you know, it just takes some time to collect that information about the home, you know, information and the tax base of the district, and it just has a little bit of time constraints in there as well.
Do you need a board in order to do that, or do you just need the numbers from Marcus? Just general numbers?
I would just use those numbers.
Okay, we can move on?
Actually, I'm not finished. No, well, with my presentation.
Right. But we're done with this part of the discussion.
Yes.
So we want to talk a little bit about the CARES Act funding. I did mention this at the last meeting. Here's the GEAR SIR pieces. Those are the dollar amounts. And we do, that money is received, the federal money, through the SIR fund, and 90% is distributed on that formula base tied to title allocation. However, it's not necessarily, if your school district gets it, it can be used at all of our schools. It doesn't have to be necessarily that one school is ineligible, and so they can't get it. And so we do have to reserve a portion of our dollars for the total number of students attending non-public schools. I believe that's going to be approximately $13,000. We're just getting those numbers back from the parochial schools, and so we'll be looking at that. It could vary a couple thousand dollars. And it can be used for a wide variety of items, including our technology, for cleaning supplies, mental health, maintain the services in the district. So if we go to hybrid learning or anything like that, that that may cost the district some more money, so it could be used just to help us offset those costs. And anything that we do, again, this is one-time funds, we wouldn't want to hire staff with these funds, because it's just, we just get it this one time, that we know of right now. So the other thing I wanted to talk about, as we're talking about budgeting, is this impact of our return to school on how we receive our revenue. So if we come to school back to the normal, like we do in the fall, like we do every year, that's just based on our ADMs and students attending school, nothing really changes there. So that in-person learning, there is no change in our current practice. However, if we move to hybrid learning, there is a change in our practice on how we calculate revenue and how students' membership is calculated. And it's actually the scheduled time that student generates, whether they're on or off-site. And so what that really means is, if you're in school with half of your students, and they're there Mondays and Tuesdays, the other half of those students have to be in attendance those same number of hours in order for them to generate that full ADM. And so it's different than distance learning, which it kind of goes back to what happened in the spring, where students are expected to have interaction with their teachers to be considered in attendance for the day. When hybrid learning, it's kind of a synchronous learning, where they need to be in attendance the same as the other students are in attendance, in order to generate the full ADM. So not only, in my opinion, is hybrid learning more expensive to, it's going to cost us money because of busing and all of these things that are additional costs for the district, the ability to generate the same amount of ADM lessons quite significantly, unless they're not in the classroom.
So can I, I just want to make sure I'm understanding. So someone's here Monday, who's, they're nine to three, after class or whatever. So that other half of class that's at home has to be, like, active online from night to.
It becomes synchronous, as Julie said. So it might be that, you know, our teachers are using, they're on Google Meet all day so that kids are, kids are participating in that lesson. The teacher says, okay, we're going to have some work time now. She's, he's watching the kid in the classroom to see who needs assistance, or watching the kids online to see who has questions.
Online is expected to be online for six hours.
And there is a lot of pushback right now coming to the MBE on this one.
Oh, yeah. Hello.
Is the pushback coming because of the calculation for ADM, or is the pushback?
There's no flexibility. I mean, what Julie's just sharing, that is far more rigid than what distance learning is. And if you've got a six-year-old who's expected to do that, now what are our parents going to be doing? So, yeah, the pushback is number of hours, kids are in front of a screen, and being able to self-regulate that.
So if they're not, and they, we calculate that, and they're not there, so we'll lose funding, because they don't generate a full ADM. And so that's why I said, it's kind of the worst of all options, because it's more expensive for us to implement that, and the ability to generate the revenue is less than the other two options.
The other two, are these mutually exclusive scenarios, is what you're trying to say?
So that's one of the things, Mary, that we don't know, right? Because we all, and I'm speaking on behalf of most of my superintendent colleagues, we've all gotten information from our community. Come back in a hybrid model or an in-person model, I'm not sending my kid. So we all believe there has to be a strand of. And again, hopefully, we're able to do that, because we are not an approved. But we're banking that we're going to be able to still do that.
What do you mean by approved?
So there are, some, some districts are approved, they have an approved virtual school. And we, and actually, I think today Jeff submitted our intent to apply, but we haven't applied yet. So to Julie's point, so that's a really great question that we don't know. Because I fully am believing that no matter what, we need to have an online option, a distance learning option for our kids and families.
Even with a distance learning option like that, if you're an approved online school, you only get 0.88% of the funding for that as well. There's a decreased amount of funding that you get. If you were a virtual school, like some are, they don't have a physical building. And so it makes some sense that they don't have capital dollars, and they don't have that type of thing. So that's why they're only getting that portion of their funding.
So those are some of the sleepless nights, because we don't have some of those, some of those answers. Scenario three, funded the same way it was during, when we started school in March. So that's more manageable.
Well, no.
Financially.
Well, financially, yes, but for the teachers and the students, it's a whole.
So as we talk about our proposed budget parameters for next school year, now we're not talking about the current one, we still are anticipating a 0% on the formula for the next two years. Just with all of the reduction in taxes coming into the state, I can't imagine that districts would receive funding. I think that that's a pretty standard. When I asked my colleagues, they're all thinking that it'll be a 0% on the general education formula. This is a question, are we anticipating 105 additional, 125 additional students each of those two years? That's what we've had, that's what we have for this year. I don't know if it's best to see how does the school year start, and what happens then, if that makes some sense or not. Special ed funding right now still increases by 4%, just based on that formula. Our parameter would be to maintain our fund balance at a 12%. Our expenditure assumptions are based on the previous four-year average, and I'm really talking about salaries and benefits. I'm not sure if that holds, if we're not getting the funding. So that'd be something the board would want to discuss as well. Achievement and integration revenue, and as you know, we went to half. We had an $800,000 levy authority, went to half last year. We have the option to increase that again for this fall's levy to the full amount of $800,000, so that's an increase of 400. And then our unemployment expenditures are increasing, that is also a levy. At the time that this came out, we hadn't received a bill, and we have now received our first bill. It's almost a half a million dollars. So just for the first quarter, the second quarter of the year, which is March through July, or June 30th, really. So we are, that'll be something that'll also increase our levy certification. And mainly, those are the.
We can just levy for that.
You can, you have to.
Yeah.
It's required.
Stacy? The 125 increase, so this year, am I correct, 170 or 180?
Well, we don't know, because it's an October 1 number that we're looking at here. So right now, we're at 50 students over.
50 students over, meaning?
We're at 175.
Yeah.
But we have enrolled currently for next, the start of this school year.
Are there open enrolled students?
There are all.
In, in district?
In both. I would have to go back and look at that number. I don't know off the top of my head, I'm sorry. No, no, not even close.
We had our.
The past, we've had about 10% of our student population that's enrolled and enrolled in, and 7% that open and rolls out, so the difference is about 3%. Of the 125?
Right.
Oh, I would have to look at that, I'm sorry, I don't know.
That's what I meant, like, half.
I really couldn't answer that off the top of my head, I'm sorry.
Julie, have you made our kindergarten?
We are at 600.
Okay, so we've got all 100 kids in the kindergarten?
Of that, we did not.
We didn't get them.
Not in open enrollment. We are at 600, which is our budgeted, what we're budgeting for kindergartens, who are at 601 right now. And so we'll see if we get any more here before school starts.
And we didn't fill the, okay.
Still haven't filled the kindergarten open and rolled.
Okay. Or are you in the grade?
Sixth grade, technically, they're not full, but we had met 30 at sixth grade. But we are, but the board allowed us to go up to 90 for sixth, seventh, and eighth grade as a count combined, and we haven't met that, not close to that.
How much space do we still have at kindergarten, and there was still online enrollment for that, right?
We have 100, I think we still have 12 available spots. The last time I looked.
The $400,000 for the achievement. So wait.
Any other questions? That's the end of your presentation?
Yes. I'm sorry, I think I took your whole presentation time.
Thank you, Julie.
I was going to let you finish, Julie. Due to the time, I am going to suspend the rest of this work session. But I did want to make a comment. We did go over the communication protocols, policy 203, 204, and 209 during our retreat, and we will need to continue discussing those. 203, school board, involving school board attendants, Stacy and Jonathan are going to do a little more research on, and I believe 204, Mary was going to do a little more research on. And unless you have something else to say, Terry, I'm going to move past yours.
I already sent you the updates to 204.
I only got them from you once, and I don't have them right now. So if you want to put something together for the policy, I guess that's what I'm looking at.
Fine.
Just an informational thing quickly, the district has started a, at least administrative-wide discussion on a book called White Fragility. And if you haven't already started reading that book, or haven't gotten the book, I'd encourage you to, to get it. There are book club-type discussions going on every week. And if you are interested, please contact Kevin Schutenger, and he'll make sure you get in a group. I think it's, it's important that we know what's going on with our administrators and what direction they're going in with their discussion. So the board is invited to attend those. It's probably more of a listening session for board members, just so that we can understand what our administrators are experiencing in our schools. And with that, I'm going to adjourn. We've got about, I think, you needed 10 minutes, Martha, or so, 15?
I think so. Chelsea.
Or Chelsea. And we'll begin the board meeting. At the board table.